It's like playing musical chairs tonight and the music just stopped in here. All right. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm gonna go ahead and ask that our clerk by cough call the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And before we go on from there, did council member gamble mentioned that he was gonna be here this evening? I feel like he said he was not gonna be here one of these nights. I don't know if this was the night. Okay, so unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused, seeing no objection. Before we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, please note in front of you, there is an orange flag. Now, what I would recommend is that if you have something that you can put the orange flag in, that will save you holding that up until I call on you. And so in the future, if you've got a mug or something that you want to bring in some flower vase, I don't care, just like, just like Kyle's doing over there, that works. That'll, that'll help me make certain that I've got you out sure in your ear, behind your ear, however you want to do it. Once I call on you, I'm gonna ask you to please remember to put the flag away and I'll keep a list right here in front of me. Does that sound good? All right, council member Foulter, will you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Thank you. The first item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except in a quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you are in the audience who would like to speak tonight, you can go ahead and hit raise hand on your Zoom. If you are on the phone, you can hit star nine. And I'm first gonna ask, is there anybody here that has signed up to speak this evening? Clerk by cough. Kirk, come on forward. And last that clerk by cough, go ahead and set the three minute timer up on the screen.
Tell me when.
And then Kirk, please state your name and generally where you live and then then we'll start.
Happy to, Mayor Kirk Pearson, resident of Monroe, Washington, a former member of the Monroe Planning Commission from 1989 to 1992. Well, history trivia for all of you. But hey, I just wanted to come by and invite all of you to grand opening event we're having for E cap program here in Monroe. As you know, we have, we share the building at the Boys and Girls Club and we did some expansion. We couldn't have done it without all of you. If you remember when you had the ARPA dollars, you gave us seventy five thousand five hundred, I believe it was. And it really helped us out and we want you all to be a part of that. And Mary, you're gonna be speaking. We're very excited about that. And I have two of my colleagues should be away. They would like to say hello that actually run the program. I'm just pretty face of the bunch, but thank you all for this. And if I may leave this.
Yes, you may. A copy does need to be left with our clerk there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we can go ahead and distribute those to council. Thank you. All right. And then on the screen we have first, and my eyesight's failing me a little bit because of the glare. I think that's Robin Hoover. Oh, good. I don't need glasses today. So Robin Hoover, we're gonna go ahead and bring you into the panel. And then just like with Mr. Pearson, you'll have a chance to state your name and address and then we'll start the timer. And she didn't hear that because she's in between. She's in the pattern buffer. That was a Star Trek reference. Thank you. Is she in the panel? Can we adjust the pain so that we can see her? There we go. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us a few minutes to speak. We are very excited about our grand opening and moving into our new space in Monroe. We are excited to be serving the children's and family and would love to have you come and see our, our grand opening on August seventeenth. We will be having a ribbon cutting and would love to have you come as well as let other people in the community know about us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and bring forward Jessica and I think that's Marburger. Am I seeing that correctly on the screen? There you go. We'll bring Jessica forward. She's in the pattern buffer.
Hello.
Hello.
I am actually, yes, Jessica Marburger. You said that correctly. I am a colleague of Kirk and Robin Hoover. One, I just wanted to reiterate that we would like to formally invite all of you on the panel and all of you in attendance tonight to our ribbon cutting ceremony in Monroe. As Robin said, that's August sixteenth or August seventeenth at six o'clock PM. We are going to have a lot of fun events. We're going to have some speakers. We're going to have a raffle, some activities for the children to do. And a lot of door prizes. So if you guys would come, we would love to see you there.
Thank you very much. If there's, if there's anybody else who'd like to speak this evening, please hit star nine if you're on the phone or hit your little raise hand button in the Zoom app. And if you're here in the audience, jump up and down. All right, seeing nobody else, we'll go ahead and move on then to the next item on the agenda. I mean, that'll be page two. This is a consent, consent agenda, item five. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Orange flag, anybody, anybody? Council member Foulter. You were partway up and I was looking for a motion. Okay, I have a motion from council member Foulter, a second from council member Hanford to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that motion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. This is item number six, six point one specifically is the first. Resolution number zero, one, zero, twenty, twenty-three, adopting city of Monroe utility shut offs for non-payment during extreme heat policy. And we have Mr. Island here. Good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So included in your packet is a policy in response to a gross substitute house bill thirteen twenty-nine. That was passed this legislative session and it sets forth requirements when we're doing water service disconnections, when the National Weather Service has issued a heat related advisory. So some of the things that we incorporated in this policy is new notifications, how we notify customers of how they could request to have water service restored. We also get an automatic alert now each day if there's any kind of National Weather Service heat alert. And we haven't, we haven't had one since May fifteenth. So even through all the summer months and everything like that, no alerts have been issued up until this point. We continually offer payment plans for customers. So that's not a new practice for us. This is just going along with National Weather Service heat related alerts themselves will offer the payment plans for customers. We are also going to, as a part of the policy, we recommend not charging the on off fees. So that's something that's included in the policy as well to not penalize people that are looking to have their water service restored just during when that National Weather Service heat alert is in effect itself. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think that's all that I have and I'm prepared for questions.
All right, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions or emotion? If so, raise your flag. Council member Foulter. I can see you off from this angle, so.
There we go.
Council member Foulter, go ahead.
I move to approve resolution two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, one, zero, adopting the city of Monroe utility shut offs for non-payment during extreme heat policy.
I have a motion from council member Foulter, a second from council member Scarborough for the requested action shown on the screen for new business item six point one. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Before we move on to the next item, I was just made aware that new business item number six point four, converting railroad avenue to eastbound one way street is being removed from the agenda. We have additional information that we want to reflect in the staff briefing, the agenda bill and bring that forward to the council at a later date. Does anybody have any concerns about that? All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda then at six point two. Also under new business, this is ordinance. This is an ordinance establishing a left, a left disability board. And we call for a director worth and director worth.
Just like after Greg, but other than that. Good evening, Mayor Council. When I need a step stool. I know exactly. Tonight before you, we have a motion and also to waive the rules of procedure, but I'll get into the whys. We're waiving the rules of procedure in a second. The OFM numbers came out and were over twenty thousand in population. And because of that, the city needs to now establish a left one board. For those of you that don't know, in nineteen seventy-seven, the left disability board was ended. But any individuals, law enforcement or firefighters that were active prior to that receive a benefit until forever for any medical expenses. So the Snowmish County has adjudicated our claims for the, our three retirees for the entirety. But now that we're over twenty thousand, Zach has worked on an ordinance for us as we have to establish our own board. The reason for the waiver tonight is because the last payments for the left one disability members was done on July seventh. And if we wait for two reading readings that could delay any payments for these individuals that have been, you know, used to getting a payment process for many, many years. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Council members looking for questions or emotion? Council member Scarborough, go ahead.
Yes. Um, I believe that does include them correct. Yes. It's not my mind. It's OFM. So it's not Ben Drew up, but yeah, so. I'm not tracking. I don't have the history on why the, the prison has been included in the population, why it hasn't, council member.
All right, any other questions from council or emotion? Council member Davis, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll move to wave council rules of procedure requirement for two readings of an ordinance for adoption.
A motion from council member Davis, a second from council member Hanford for the first requested action, which is motion one in new business item six point two. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Council member Davis.
Yes, I'll move to accept as first reading and adopt ordinance zero, one, four slash twenty twenty-three, establishing a L E O F F, Leoff one disability board and establishing a chapter or establishing chapter four point eight zero of the Monroe municipal code establishing an effective date.
Thank you. So council members, I'm going to request that we take a look at the slide. Let me move to staff really quickly. Which motion is necessary to read? Is it the one on the slide or the one that's in the packet that? Okay, so without referring to Zach, does the council, did the make or the motion in the second? Would you be willing to allow that motion to lapse and revise the motion or?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have objection to allowing the former motion to, to pass without, I mean, to, to not have action on it? All right, no objection. That was in lieu of voting. It probably would have been easier to vote it down. All right. So that motion does not exist anymore. We're gonna go to council member Davis with the request to consider motion two that is on the screen and I am sorry, go ahead.
No problem. So I move to accept as first reading and adopt ordinance zero, one, fours slash two thousand twenty-three, amending title for MMC boards. Commissions and committees by the addition of the new chapter four point eight zero, Leoff debt or L E O F F dash one. Disability board there to establishing a law enforcement officers and firefighters disability board pursuant to RCW forty-one that point two, six point one, one, zero. Defining the standards and procedures for such board, including the membership criteria and powers and duties thereof, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Yeah, a motion from council member Davis, who looked like he was about ready to sing a song there, holding up the microphone. And a second from council member Hanford. Thought we're gonna go into we are, we will, we will rock you or something. All right, any discussion on the motion? Thank you. All right, seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda then is new business item six point three. This is the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update, public equitable engagement plan. And this is from planning manager Turtle.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. So before you is a, it's a supplemental equitable engagement plan. And so for the comprehensive plan, we have standard processes which are, talk about your CIPA review, public hearings. This goes beyond and it's really to ensure that we're engaging with all parties of our community. And so this plan was prepared by our consulting firm on our behalf, Mig. And it's also helping us to implement Imagine Monroe as well as some changes to the Peaches Sound Regional Council's Vision twenty fifty, which is our multi-county planning policies. Specifically, it's regional collaboration action number three, regional equity strategy. And this is starting the conversation about equity, which we will need to be addressing throughout this comprehensive plan update process. It also helps us implement the twenty twenty-three House Bill eleven eighty-one, which amended the Growth Management Act's goal, number eleven, which addresses citizen participation. So the plan outlines who, who we're gonna engage with, how we're gonna engage with them. It goes beyond our website, our surveying. It talks about the city council planning commission meetings. It also includes a long list of pop-up events. So we've been out at Pride, Juneteenth, Farmers Market. We spent two days up at the high school at a civics class. And so we're gonna use this as one of our tools to make sure that we're reaching all people in the community or trying our best. And so for you this evening, I am hopeful that you have had a chance to read the plan. And if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. But we would like you to adopt resolution two thousand three, zero, zero, nine, approving the final draft equitable engagement plan for the twenty twenty-four, twenty forty-four comprehensive plan update. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions or motion? Council member Kenny, go ahead. Can you hit your microphone? Sorry.
Sorry. I have such loud voice. I thought I might, might need the mic. Okay, let's see if I can do this. I may have to stand up. I can read it from there. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero, zero, nine, approving the final draft equitable engagement plan. EEP for the twenty twenty-four, twenty forty-four comprehensive plan update.
I have a motion from council member Kenny, a second from council member Scarborough for the requested action in new business item six point three, twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update. I turn to council for discussion on the motion. Council member Hanford, did I see your flag up? Go ahead. It's one of those clap on clap offs.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I noticed in there it says one of the places that there will be doing the education and things is that Everett Community College East Campus. I was wondering if that is still, is that still active or?
That's a typo. They're, we are not, they're not there anymore. Where?
Middle of page, PDF page three. Three of twenty-one. It just says educational institutions. They're the last one listed.
Yeah, that should have been stricken. My apologies.
It's okay.
So would you like a motion to to specifically amend the motion to strike that or do you want a broader statement?
It's also on page four. I don't know if it needs to be stricken because this was a it's the list. It's, it's comprehensive we can be, but if it's not there, I don't think, I don't know. I guess I would return to attorney low if he has any concern about it. It's part of the planning document.
Zach, I'm, I'm a little bit more reticent. I just want to make certain that since this is a planning document that that we don't need to do something more formal or have a broader statement to, you know, so I look to your counsel. Go ahead.
No, Mr. Mayor, I believe that Ms. Turtle was correct in her surmise. If the, if it was a practical matter, the venue simply doesn't exist. There's no need to do anything formal at this point. And into your, your specific concern, this isn't technically a development regulation. This is a public participation plan and the rules for adopting it are somewhat more relaxed in this context.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you. Any more discussion or deliberation on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is council member reports. I'll just go ahead and start on this side with council member Davis. Nothing to report this evening. Thank you, council member Foulter.
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, council member Kenny.
Director Hasser tonight attended the French Creek Flood Control District meeting. I think that was two weeks ago, which was always interesting and informative. Music in the park has been great. I've been able to go to all of those so far. I think the last one is Friday and that's been good turnout and a lot of fun. And Thursday, I'll let council member Fisher say more about that, but we went to the SEC dinner with the mayor up in Everett, which was also really informative and interesting. So thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I have to report is that I wish I was down by Lake Tye with Ms. Knight.
We only have so much room, so she's having to take it remotely there. We could probably beam her over to somewhere in Hawaii if she has a moment to change her screen. Thank you. Council member Fisher, go ahead.
I want everybody to get their laughter out.
Yeah, waiting for her to bring forward Excalibur. I know.
Me and Council member Kenny attended the dinner. It was my first one. It was great to be there with a bunch of council members and mayors and people in different positions around the county. The mayor was there also and just to, just to talk about the different problems and solutions that we all have. So definitely worth going. I would definitely go again. One other thing is I was gone last week. I missed a couple of meetings. So I did listen to it. I totally appreciate the mayor's support for me being gone for work stuff and all of your guys' support and see staff report versus support. This position is really, really important to me and I take it very seriously, but sometimes I have to be gone because of work. So I appreciate all the support and hopefully I won't have to go out again this summer, but chances are probably slim. So thank you so much for all of that.
Would it help if we told you you couldn't leave the rest of the summer and therefore that'll affect the environment?
I do kinda wanna go too, really bad, so.
All right, thank you, council member. Council member Scarborough. There you go. It's like starting a fire with Flint.
First question, what day is the parade for the fair?
Saturday.
Okay, this is what I, this is what.
Of August.
It's not tomorrow, but.
This is what I have so far as far as signs for cars. Campbell has his. Heather has one. Tammy has one. Jeff had, I have two for Jeff, two for me, two for Kevin, and Ed has told me he has his too. I have made lanyards for all these signs in black and gold Bearcat colors. And I have some magnets for the bottom of the signs if you have a metal car. If you're lucky and you get the big Corvette stuff, then we're gonna have to use riggers take folded in circle taped to the bottom, which I'll bring too. So we have found most of them and I understand that Janelle has ordered a bunch of signs. I don't know if she's ordered new ones for everyone or if she's just ordered what we might need when I reported to her what we had and didn't have. I also have one side that says city council and I don't know on whose car that go. I have that one too. So that's a report on getting ready for the parade. Other than that, that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next, we have staff and department reports. Oh, orange and black, here you go. Next, we have staff and department reports. We got a public works report from Director Roberts. Good evening.
Hello. Oh, this is awkward, isn't it? I don't like this at all. All right, try to get over that. So in your packet there, there's a department report for the public works. You'll notice that at the beginning of the report there, there's a letter from the Washington State Department of Health written to Mr. John Landy, who is the current manager of our city water system. The previous manager of our city water system, name rhymes with Jacob, fifteen years, never got a letter this nice from the Department of Health. I'm not jealous, I swear. Anyway, we're moving on to the, moving on to the next item in the packet there. There is an update on the traffic calming policy study and assessment as well as the downtown parking assessment evaluation update. I believe council member Hanford, you asked about that last month, so hopefully got a chance to take a look at that. And then also administrator Knight asked me to mention that the staff from the city hall building at eight oh six West Main has begun to relocate as of, I believe, two weeks ago now. So IT and HR and the lone member of public works that's moving out to the one seventy ninth facility, suite three twenty. Don't drop by just yet, please. Still kinda messy. We're just moving in. Anyway, has, has moved over there a couple of weeks ago. Community development moved over last week. The executive group is gonna be coming over in the first of August, finance on the eighth of August, and then court is gonna be moving over to the seven, six, nine building off, off of Village Way there on the fifteenth of August, if everything holds the plan and nothing goes awry between now and then. With that, we have the letting of contracts that council, council authorizes through consultants services at the bottom of the report and that concludes it, Mayor. Available for questions?
All right, any questions, comments or good jokes for Director Roberts? He took them all. All right, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
Lay, I was trying to grab. Hard to do. No, reading that letter, make sure to pass on everyone that that's really awesome. Not to pour salt in your wound, I'm sorry. But no, it's just the part of extremely impressed, you know, coming from them is kind of a big deal. We know they're great, but it's kinda nice to see that they now know that they're great too. So yeah, that's all I have.
I will do so. Thank you.
You know, I wouldn't think of it as you not getting one when you were in that position, but rather you're empowering your team to get one.
I had fifteen tries. He's only had two.
All right, next item then is Director Hasser with eight point two. This is the Finance Department, June twenty twenty-three report. That microphone's way up there.
Yeah, I'm glad it wasn't after Greg also. So I've been noticing we've been getting through the agenda pretty quickly. So I thought I would take the opportunity next, use the next hour to really go over the quarter percent point with the finance report.
No, you, you said you want you, that won't make it to your timeframe.
I'm kidding. The finance report is in your packet. And I am available if there's anything.
Does anybody have any questions for Director Hasser? I think she's already given us a good joke, so. All right, thank you. All right. Now to the Police Department report with Chief Charlie. Chief Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I don't know how to follow those acts. They were phenomenal. You have your start with middle C. Included in your packet, I would just mention significant cases. You see there is an incident where there's a hit and run, and the person fled when contact was made by the police department. We're seeing an increasing willingness of people to leave the scenes of crimes or traffic stops and flee the scene due to the current environment that we see statewide, but that is also impacting us here locally. Contained are the department statistics, which I'll let you go through those unless you have any questions. I would mention a couple of personal updates, personnel updates on the final page, including Alison Pron. She's our evidence technician, who is an absolute superstar. For those of you that were in the community academy last year, you got to see some of the things that she does. She was recognized for her property and evidence capabilities and received a certification. Also, Renee Cooper is our new intern who is revamping and helping us with our communications outreach. We welcome her to the team as an intern. She's been quite valuable, and I understand that she will be bringing forth Instagram to our repertoire, so we'll soon be putting that out for all of you Gen Zers. I don't know where we're at.
I just learned Twitter got a new name today, so hey.
Yeah, I believe that one alone, and one that is not included in your report, but you'll probably be hearing about, and certainly will report on it next month. The Fire Department and Police Department have been working for a couple of months scheduling a walkthrough of the Wash dot the DOT property up there due to concerns. Previous years, we've had brush fires, homeless encampments, various stolen items that have been discarded there, as well as trash, rubbish, and so forth, livability type issues and fire hazards. We were able to go out today and get together. We had about sixteen of us. You'll see that on Facebook and on Instagram yet, coming soon. And members of the Fire Department, Police Department, as well as our city administrator traipsed through the woods and went on a nice hike today, and were able to get a feel for what is going on up there. The Fire Department doing a risk assessment and the Police Department dealing with we had three camps that were active, but they had all been tagged. We monitored that area regularly. And so nothing out of the ordinary for what we typically see. I just want to thank our organizer Sergeant Carswell did a phenomenal job organizing this. And our community outreach officer, Brady Pettit, as well as Alisa Delgado did a great job explaining to everybody who was present what they were seeing and what was going on. So I was very happy with that, and I want to take this chance to thank the Fire Department and Chief Kevin O'Brien. It's a great partnership that we have with each fire departments in the city. It was good. It was kind of hard, but I did keep up the city administrator, so she was hustling through the woods, but.
Now she's swimming in the lake. I get it.
Yeah, it's like a triathlon for her today. Until I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, council member Scarborough. Go ahead.
Understand. I understand on on our media around town, it's been a lot of input from people about the unhappiness of the the mess up there and the homeless around town and we have something that we're putting together to let those people understand the problem and what we're doing with it.
You mean the residents of our city? That that are complaining. And like I said, today we was was the first day that we all went up there as a team. We put out some information on Facebook, talking about what we saw, what we did, and we're going to continue to work with the various stakeholders, the owner of the properties Wash dot. They did engage us in some email today, so there's some conversation started, as well as a Zoom call with all the people that I mentioned. So we're at a starting point to get the property owner to take a little more investment in their property.
And so I don't know if you saw in your email, but I did send a letter to the Department of Transportation. I requested the meeting with the Fire District on, that was held on Tuesday last week, it was Tuesday, which led to the walkthrough, or which was part of the law, what led to the walkthrough today. As part of that meeting, though, both Fire District and City decided to send a letter to DOT explaining that they need to maintain and secure the site and ensure, you know, public safety, especially with the fires that have been occurring in addition to unhoused residents and other things that may be going on on their property. We did receive correspondence from Senator Bradford and also our two representatives. Senator Bradford was pretty quick to respond, probably within an hour and a half of me sending off the letter to to him. And then the two representatives, I think, reached out to us today or yesterday. So we do have a lot of people that are engaging in on this. And so I would imagine that these are sort of those initial steps of of getting people together to remind everybody as to what the responsibilities are, so that it's not just falling on city staff, which includes PD and crisis responders. So that's a lot of what we've been working on.
Did we identify other places around town besides that one up line with their church? Like behind Safeway, behind the new electric station that have the same concerns, which I would suggest that we I've said it before on several occasions, talking about this. A place around Bend, Oregon had great success thinking about and doing limbing up all the trees in those areas up to about eight feet to stop people from hiding in those bushes, but I haven't seen anybody DOT specifically, I think. Take that to any, have it, have hasn't given that any credence or thought, and I haven't, I haven't heard anything from them saying why it wouldn't be something that might be considered, only that it hasn't been done. And I, you know, because I said it doesn't mean it should be done. I'm just suggesting that I had heard that that was a deterrent around this person and let me know about that, that it might be a deterrent. But for those people to go to those meetings, you might, you might suggest that, and there's, there's plenty more places around town where they're, like, we've been out by the river cleaning up. It's I don't know. They're hiding in the bushes, and they, they only have to wait till we leave before they come back and make a tent in the bushes.
Thank you. Administrator Knight, go ahead.
I just wanted to address some of the comments that Councilmember Scarborough just made. We did have to have what I would frame as a very productive phone call with the right of way team at WSDOT. That's the group that is responsible for managing the right of way. And they were asking us what we thought could or should be done. So they're actually coming out to survey the sites. They will be reaching out to our community outreach team to go along with them on that tour and talking about what could be done. So we will certainly, Councilmember Scarborough, share your experience and your thoughts that you shared tonight with the team at WSDOT. So I appreciate you bringing that up again. I think that's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Charlie, who is now leaving the podium? All right. Director Bailey, I was gonna call you Chief Lance, but okay, we're gonna go with Director Bailey. You enjoyed talking from the podium earlier, so up again. So this is eight point one, Community Development twenty twenty three monthly report from Director Bailey.
I'm wondering if one of the strategies from Wash dot to manage the right of way was to actually build the bypass, but that's just, I don't know. Just a crazy, it's a crazy idea. And so the the pack, the a monthly report for community development is in the packet. A couple of highlights, the project of the month is the public engagement that we've been doing for the comp plan. You probably heard a lot of this, but there's some photos in there. We've been at the farmer's market. We were at Pride event, Juneteenth. The downtown block party, which was a lot of fun. And we've got some events coming up. We'll be doing one more farmer's market. We'll be doing the belonging event and National Night Out. And the next year, we'll be doing it all over again to be presenting sort of the next round of the comp plan. And there's the, I should mention the event. We, we went and talked to one of the classes at the high schools. All this photo in there. Didn't want to, under construction projects, I don't think that I've actually mentioned this in previous, it's it's in the report, but it did the math. So either finishing up projects that are either finishing up in progress or getting ready to start, we have a total of one hundred and thirty nine units. Most of those are single family. So we we are seeing, we're development this year is going to be a higher unit dwelling unit number than we had last year. So that's, that's a positive thing. I did want to point out one thing, just a follow up from an item that we brought to to council back in May. It involved the determination of the methodology for doing the the housing allocations or the, the, they call the initial housing growth targets. That came to to the, to City Council for a recommendation of the methodology. There were three that were being considered. And that also went through the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee, who also had the same recommendation, which was a hybrid of one and two. And the County Council just adopted at their meeting on in July, the, that methodology C. So that will, that will set the methodology for how we determine those, those growth targets, and those will be used to inform or to help the framework of the development scenarios in the comp plan. So that's all I've got. Anybody have any questions?
Questions, comments for Director Bailey? Say Chief Lance again. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next report we have then is under nine point one, Mayor Administrative Reports, starting off with nine point one, City Administrator Report, Extended Agenda. Administrator Knight.
All right. Well, um, thank you, Mayor and Council. Couple of items, we are going to be canceling the Tuesday, August first meeting for National Night Out, so hopefully everybody will be able to attend that. And then for Tuesday, August eighth, the Legislative Affairs Committee meeting is canceled. We don't have anything planned for that agenda. For the regular business meeting, starting at seven PM, we have an update on our branding initiative with Becky Hassert. And then on the consent agenda, we've got the regular accounts payable, accounts and the ACH payments, payroll, the meeting minutes, our school resource officer contract, an agreement with Snohomish County for pickleball courts, and then the twenty twenty one Building Code Adoption Ordinance. Under new business, we have one resolution for an interfund loan with Becky Hazard, and then department reports and administrator reports, and that's all we have so far for the agenda on August eighth.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council? Tammy? I could see you were struggling to figure out which button do I push? Which flag goes up? It's like semaphore over there.
Yes. Okay, I think I got it. I just wanted to share some positive feedback I received this week. And a couple of people last week too about the pickleball courts. They had seen the land use action signs up and were super excited about it. And we're curious to learn more. So is there some kind of public outreach being done or any kind of? You know, where can people find out more about that project? And I know Ben Swanson is heading that up, but since we don't have a Parks Department report tonight, I was hoping to ask Director Farrell about that, but going to ask you instead.
I don't have an update. I would have to get back to council and find out what the outreach plan is for the pickleball courts, but thanks for raising that issue, and we will see what we can do to get some information out if it isn't already planned. The Parks Department usually does a phenomenal job at putting information out on social media and updating their their webpage. So let me just double check, and we'll be back with council with more information.
People feel really, really heard in the community too, because a lot of people have wanted those. And what they've expressed to me is that they feel heard. They feel that they expressed interest in having those built, and they're delighted that that's going on. So just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments for Administrator Knight? On the extended agenda. All right. Next one is City Administrator Report in general. So Administrator Knight, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Just to remind the City Council that the Snohomish County Council tries to, or they do schedule a meeting in each one of their legislative districts. So the meeting for Sam Lowe's district is scheduled for August eighth. That's the same day as the council meeting. Their meeting begins at five PM. So if there are council members that are interested in attending that meeting, we will notice for a potential quorum. The location is still being determined, so we're still trying to work out exactly where that meeting will be held. But again, we'll keep council members informed. We already mentioned that there's nothing on the August eighth Legislative Affairs Committee agenda, so that meeting will be canceled. And then I guess we need a a motion to go ahead and cancel that meeting.
Okay, looking for a motion from council. Council member Kenny, you have your light on.
Oh, sure. So let's see, we are canceling the.
Move to cancel the August eighth, twenty twenty three Monroe City Council Legislative Affairs Committee meeting, and you can say so moved.
All right. I I moved to cancel the August eighth, twenty twenty three. So moved. I've got flags and microphones.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Fulcher for the requested action that is shown on the screen right now regarding the August eighth Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Anything further, Administrator Nate?
The last item I have is an update on stray shopping cart management campaign. And so I'm gonna ask Zach Humphries to step up to the podium and provide council with a brief overview.
Awesome. Well, thank you, council. So in this last March, the mayor noticed that the city had accumulated a rather large number of shopping carts just outside City Hall located adjacent to the Fire and Police Access Road. And then at the direction of the mayor, he directed staff to look into solutions to address this issue. And the Public Works Department came up with a pretty simple system. They just reached out to the local retailers in town, notified them that they had, that City Hall had shopping carts, and then gave those retail stores ninety days to recover their carts. Worked very well. The stockpile was gone. There weren't any shopping carts, and you still drive there today, and there aren't any shopping carts. So it's great to see that that worked very well. But in addition to this communication system that was put in place, staff also started having interviews with management and owners of retail stores in town. And what those interviews kind of realized, the question kind of behind those interviews rather was why did City Hall accumulate so many shopping carts in the first place? And why are there stray shopping carts around town? And what the interviews brought to the attention of staff was that local retail stores are kind of fighting an uphill battle. Shopping cart theft accounts for the vast majority of shopping cart cases or abandoned shopping cart cases in town. Some members of the unhoused community will use shopping carts to store their personal belongings, will use them to light garbage on fire or cook with, or find other destructive or temporary uses for them. And this costs retail stores a lot of time and money to either recover these carts or replace them. The interviews also brought to light that some or other members of the community do use shopping carts to transport groceries, either from the grocery store to a bus stop or from the grocery store to where they live in town, and then they abandon the shopping cart. But the qualitative data that was gathered from these interviews suggests that these cases aren't as frequent compared to how some members of the unhoused community are using them. These shopping carts, sorry, the retail stores do pay for recovery services for shopping cart recovery services, or they sometimes even will direct their own staff to retrieve the shopping. or they sometimes even will direct their own staff to retrieve the shopping carts and bring them back. We interviewed some of these shopping cart recovery services and also interviewed management again, and learned that the kind of scope or the extent of what they can gather from the city is very limited to the information that they have. And to kind of put it a different way, they can only collect the shopping cart if they know where it is. So the communication system that Public Works put in place was very helpful for the retail stores. They, they, prior to not being communicated, did not know that City Hall had so many of their shopping carts. So it's great for them to get those back. But staff decided to take this one step further, and this is where the stray cart program comes into play. We are encouraging business owners and residents to, if they come across a shopping cart, to call the appropriate retailers that they can find the shopping cart, pick it up and bring it back. That was one of the major concerns that the managers and owners of these stores kept putting forward to us is, hey, we would love to know where these shopping carts are so that we can get them back. So that's where the stray cart program comes into play. This information will be disseminated on a city web project webpage and also be disseminated through a newsletter and social media. And one thing that I should just note to you all, the, the campaign does acknowledge that if they do choose to call the city, the city only has an obligation to pick up shopping carts either on city property or shopping carts that are blocking the city right of way. But the major way we're going to track the efficacy of just this overall campaign as, as calls are coming in is we'll just be looking at those cart counts. Retail stores do actually count the amount of carts each month. We're seeing if there's any sort of an impact, just a correlated metric is what we're looking for. And then by about November, which is kind of an informal deadline for when this campaign will end, the city will evaluate the data and then determine if we need to take any further action to address abandoned shopping carts in the area. So Mayor, open for questions.
Thank you, any questions? I like that, we can do this. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead, I like it.
No, thank you very much for that. It's funny, you look around town and it kind of makes you wonder, is anybody picking them up? And I'm glad we're, we're active about figuring out how to get them back to the, back at the stores and out from the sidewalks and everywhere else. But great program to start with, and thank you.
All right, thank you, any other questions or comments from council? All right, thank you very much. Administrator Night, anything further?
The only thing I have is Mike Farrell, Director Mike Farrell is in the attendees, and he does have an update on the pickleball courts if we wanted to bring him forward and answer those questions.
Go ahead, bring him forward. He's on the pattern buffer. Director Farrell, good evening.
Hey, good evening. Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, to kind of follow up and give a little brief update on what's, what we've been doing with these pickleball courts. It's, it's been a great project, and we've been in contact with two different local pickleball interest groups. They've, we've gotten great input from them, and, and it's, it's gone a long way into our final court layouts for Lake Ty Park, because we're moving from having two pickleball courts to, I believe, five, five, I can't remember if it's five or six. I think it's five pickleball courts at Lake Ty, overlaid with tennis courts as well. So, so that's, that's been a nice improvement. And then over at, at Sky River Park, we, we will have two dedicated pickleball courts at that park. So we plan to have a written project update, including sketches for the two sites and, and timeline with our next department update next month. And, and we'll also put that out on social media as well.
All right, thank you very much, Director Farrell. Any questions, comments? Pickleball? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Nothing else from the administrators' report?
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, we're gonna go ahead and go on to the mayor's report. See what I am supposed to say, then I'll see what notes I. So just a couple of items first, Monroe this week, volume nine is in your packets. If you have any questions on anything in there, please let me know. The left disability board does require two members of the council to be members of the board. I have had staff contact both Councilmember Fisher and also Councilmember Hanford to see if they're interested in serving. I understand that you both said yes. So I will be appointing the two of them to serve on the left board, so thank you both for doing that. And then, and I do thank council for approving that. That was something that happened rather quickly because we officially topped twenty thousand and were, in some cases, discovering things that's like, oh, we need to do that now. So thank you for waiving your rules of procedure to take care of that this evening. The next item I just wanna share with you first, you will have noted on the extended agenda that we do have Purple Heart Day coming up. I think that's on August seventh, so just for your awareness, I do thank everybody who has served our country and their dependents. I especially think those people who have earned the Purple Heart or been recognized with a Purple Heart for their sacrifices and in their service. So we will, we will have the flag flown at the plaza at City Hall for about a week. And please keep those folks in your thoughts and your prayers on, especially on that day. Couple other items, one, I did have that meeting with the fire district, talked through some of the issues that we're having out there, trying to get an idea of what sort of information they had. You know, there is speculation as to where the fires might be originating. And, you know, for us, we just wanna understand from an arson perspective, where are these things coming from? What evidence do we have? So as you're encountering people, if, if anybody says something, especially on social media, because sometimes people report things on social media, and one of the questions that some people will ask is, did you contact PD and what did they say? Just as you're bumping into people, just if, if they say they know that somebody did it, please encourage them to reach out, we need their testimony, we need their evidence to, to help identify where things are coming from so that we can stop this, these issues from happening. So you will have seen on social media, I think late last week, that PD had put out something just reminding people that if you see something, please call nine one one or the non-emergency line. I think some people have a tendency to get in social media and don't think about, hey, I really need to call the governing body to try to get resolution on this, and we do need evidence and everything, so thank you all. So the next item then, and then with that, you will have seen the letter that is in your email. Staff went out and walked the site earlier today with the fire district, and that is a really good thing, really important thing to do. I'm happy to hear that we had positive communications with the Department of Transportation. I'm, I like the ideas that were shared this evening from Councilmember Scarborough, and I'm hoping that there are other ideas that can be applied to address these issues. And we will keep council updated as, as we learn new things. I also attended the Snohomish County Cities Meeting, I think that was on Thursday last week. And some of the things they talked about there, we end up with presentations about the legislative agenda for this coming year. So they talked a little bit about Blake, they talked a little bit about, about chemical dependency and about pursuits. And they talked about some other things that were, again, related to the legislative agenda. I don't know that there was anything really new that was shared. One of the things that was expressed was that this coming year for, for people that would like to see some additional changes done to like the pursuits or the Blake fix, that there may be some reluctance from legislators to try to address those with additional amendments next year, in part because it is an election year for the legislative body next year. And it was a lot of work this current year, getting the changes that did occur. Again, they did bring, the governor did bring the legislature back into session after it had left, and it, it sounds like it was, there were heated discussions and things like that. So we'll see what actually transpires, because there are times I am not even aware, and all of a sudden, there's some wonderful or scary thing that happens. So that was some of the report on that. I also attended Music in the Park, great music, it was great seeing folks there, great seeing folks getting out and dancing. So I, I won't be dancing, but I'm happy there are people that like to. And left one, I've already mentioned that, the last thing that I wanted to share is that yesterday on my ride home from work, I had about an hour-long meeting, yeah, the commute's that long, where a representative from the Port of Edmonds spoke with me. I'm not certain that you're aware, but the Port of Everett is interest, Port of Everett, not Edmonds, Port of Everett is, their, their district is not the entire county. King County, the Port of Seattle is the entire entirety of King County. And the Port of Everett, back in nineteen XX, a long time ago, had originally tried to make the Port District the entire county of Snohomish, and it was voted down. They went back pretty quickly and, and decided to make it a smaller geographic region where it was supported, and that's why today you have the boundaries that you do that don't come all the way out to Monroe. The Port of Everett is interested in expanding to be countywide again. This, of course, would bring in more properties that it could do economic development work that the port might be interested in doing. At the same time, that means that we'd see increases in our property taxes. One of the concerns, so I was asked what sort of projects are important to us? And I expressed that my largest concern, my largest priority is the governance model. And we had a discussion that went back and forth about why that was the most important thing for me. As you're all aware, at least for me, I get concerned that our voice here in Monroe is not always as effective or loud as the collective voices in, on the I five corridor in southwest Snohomish County. And I would be concerned about either expressing my support or otherwise voting for personally the Port District expanding if I felt that our geographic region was not getting the same weight as, you know, southwest, for example. This is one of the reasons why our country has both the House of Representatives and also a senate, which is why a place like Rhode Island or North Dakota that might have the population of Snohomish County has two senators, but maybe only one or two representatives, but is larger than Snohomish County. So, you know, I shared with her that while I can give her a list of projects, which I ultimately did, that my concern was if all we're gonna do is focus on the projects, we're not gonna be focusing on the issue of governance. And that if you're only gonna do it by population allocation, that my concern would be we'd be paying into something and not seeing any benefit or very little benefit. And we have, we're in an area where we need economic development, transportation projects. And of course, other places feel the same way, but, you know, we're developing, you know, we're, we're at a different stage of development than maybe Edmonds is, and we may be where Edmonds was or Everett was, you know, fifty years ago, twenty-five years ago, or, or more. So if you do get contacted by the Port of Everett, because they, they may do that, to the extent that you might feel concerned about the governance model, please, please feel confident that when somebody asks you, do you like chocolate or strawberry? That it's okay to say beef jerky. You know, it's okay to not answer the question that's specifically posed to you, because sometimes those questions are intended to, to help build, hey, we're gonna go out, we're gonna try to get the Port of Everett to expand countywide by saying these are the projects we're gonna support, when you didn't quite talk about the issue of governance, which is more fundamental and more important to me. Because I can give you a line of projects that people will support, but at the end of the day, are we actually gonna get those projects if we don't have proper representation? So again, if they call you, share what you'd like. I'd encourage thinking about the governance model, go ahead, Tammy. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so, so the projects that I listed, you would be familiar with all of them, so five two two. Highway two bypass. Talked about the importance of improvements along two or three as well, because we have a lot of people that live here that go to the east side or go to Seattle every day. Talked to her a little bit about how like the trestle's important to us, but there's a lot of focus on things that are within Snohomish County. But again, a lot of people that live here go southwest to go to work, and that we need to keep that in mind. Talked to them about transportation, we'd love to have light rail, we're not gonna get it anytime soon at all. We'd love to have more reliable bus service from Monroe down to Boffel, rather than having to go all the way up to Everett to then go all the way down to Seattle. Talked to them about our unhoused issues here that every community is having issues with, and the importance of having housing co-responders and ways to, to get people into a better place in their lives rather than living in crisis and, and in the woods or on the streets. Talked about affordable housing, talked about business retention, business recruitment and recruitment, retention, and I always forget the other one, so. And then we talked about employment and needing to have ways for people to get vocational training and things like that. Talked about how we're trying to do improvements at other areas in town, including North Kelsey. And so what was interesting was just in the conversation, she did mention that even though we're not part of the Port District today, that a lot of these things are things that they've been advocating for in the state legislature, and I absolutely thanked her for that. I would hope that they would continue doing that, even if we're not part of the Port District. But again, I kept going back to the governance model and felt that if the way you allocate the districts is not defined in the charter that the, that the residents approve, that there will be jeremandering and things like that in the future that, that could end up reducing our collective voice here in the Sky Valley in the future relative to the more populous areas. So, yeah, Councilmember Hanford and Councilmember Scarborough, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mayor, was it, I think her name's Lisa?
Her name was Lisa, I didn't get her last name.
Okay, that's who you, no, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and it was a great conversation, again, when you're on a phone call or video, but we're on a phone call, it's sometime, and I think we were both commuting at the time. It's kind of hard to get voice intonations down, and I, I think that I might have sounded a little bit defensive at one point in time. You all know me, sometimes I can be kind of serious, it's just who I am, and doesn't mean that I'm anti an idea, it's just that I'm going to vet an idea before I jump on board. So I, at the end of the day, the conversation was really good, after forty-five minutes to an hour, I think we ended on a really good note, and she said that she'd go back and work at the RCW to see if they could do some sort of district process that were more geographic oriented rather than based on population. So I should say that she did listen, go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
Feel free to support a train stop for the.
I mentioned the train stop, yeah, so I think that that's the, I think that that was the first thing that I, that was the second thing that I said, I said five two two. And, and I was trying to think outside of the box of things she hadn't heard. I mentioned that we would love to have a, a train station, passenger train station in Monroe. So I was channeling my inner Scarborough, and I shared that, it was, it was number two or number three in what I said.
The other thing I was gonna say, when you're done with the subjects, it's just, if you take those signs for your cars now, if you lay them out in your garage for a few days, the curl goes out of them, and they're a lot easier to put on.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. All right. Are there any, any other questions or comments about curling signs or, or anything else? I've got a horse now. All right, well, I don't think I have anything else this evening, Administrator Night, did you, did you have anything else? Okay, I think we're done this evening, and Becky, you and I were both wrong on the end time. So we are adjourned, have a great week, everybody, and I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.